For the Planning Commission, Citizen Advisory Committee, City of Bull, Michigan, for our Monday, November 8th, 2021 meeting at 7:00 PM, not 8:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with a justic for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
Commissioner Godola is absent tonight, and Chair Barker.
Here. And do I hear a motion to excuse Mike?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I got a second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mike's hand is excused. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
And a motion for approval.
And second?
Support.
And discussion? Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Do I have a motion for the approval of amendments of the previous meeting, October the 11th, 2021, a regular meeting?
Motion for that.
And a second?
Support.
And discussion?
Um, I would like to be, to be given like a Reader Digest version before it's speed. I was gone for that, and I'm not sure what all...
Um, I think it will be, are you talking about the 2335 West Main? Uh, this, this, that's on the agenda tonight. I think, Marty, that'll become apparent as we go into this.
Okay.
Basically, we've, we approved, um, A and B of our series of questions, and we got stuck on, on the, um, issue with the sewer.
Okay.
So, and that will come out, that will be explained.
Okay.
So I think, I think you'll be okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Any other discussion on, on the amendments? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Are there any public comments or communications concerning items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will go to old business. Uh, I would like to resume the public hearing for 2335 West Main, special land use. It's a reapplication, um, and I'm gonna ask Andy to bring us up to where we're at, and then I'm gonna ask Andrea to come up and explain the situation with the sewer work.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, at the previous meeting, um, the application for the grow facility in 2335 West Main was considered. Um, the reason why it was back on the agenda was because it was approved in 2020, and the ordinance states that if the site plan that's been approved after a one-year period, if there's no activity on the site, then the approval lapses basically or sunsets unless they apply for an extension. Uh, they didn't apply for an extension, so that's why it was brought back up in front of the Planning Commission again because the site plan, special land use, had expired basically. So, um, the public hearing was held last month, and then, as the Planning Commission reviewed the standards, everything is basically the same, and the primary change in the, uh, in the site that was being considered was that the applicant no longer desired to connect to the public sewer system and instead wanted to utilize, um, a subject, you know, private subject system. It would still be connected to city water in either case, but how the wastewater was handled, um, was gonna change. And so, as we got into that part of, of the review, there were a few questions that, that came up. So first is that the site plan that they submitted still showed a sewer connection, uh, to the public sewer system. And then, secondly, there was a question about, um, whether or not they are required to connect to the city's system based on how close they are. So after the meeting, um, we did some research on this and found that the city's sewer ordinance requires that if you are within 200 feet of a public sewer line, then thou shalt connect to it. And in this case, they are about 260 feet away from the sewer line, and they would have to cross onto the property. So that 200 feet typically applies if it's in the right of way, then you would, and if it's within 200 feet of your frontage, then you just extended that 200 feet hook up. In this case, they are separated by a property that's owned by the church next door to the east, and so, because they're more than 250, or two, because they're more than 200 feet away, and because they'd have to cross this other property, the city cannot, does not require them to connect to the sewer system. Um, they can still opt to connect if they so desire, but that's not something that we would require anymore. And so, long and short of it was that, you know, after figuring that out, after the meeting, then that means that, um, from a planning and zoning perspective, the plan where they are utilizing a private subject system would be fine. Um, now, I think Andy's gonna provide us a little bit of an update, uh, as far as that's concerned. Um, they provided us with two site plans. One site plan shows a, a sewer connection and easement that runs across a church and property. We, and then there is another site plan that's exactly the same, except that it has a subject system on it instead of a sewer connection. So, um, that's really the only, that's what hung us up last time, is we wanted to get that figured out, primarily because, you know, the Planning Commission doesn't have the authority to like, you know, waive or vary from the requirements of that sewer ordinance, and the site plan was not accurate, so we didn't want to approve a site plan that had a sewer connection on it, then have them immediately turn around and do something else, especially if we weren't sure that that's something else they wanted to do, was gonna comply with the ordinance in the first place. So we felt the best at that time, well, should say the Planning Commission in addition to me, um, the group felt the best at that time to, you know, postpone the decision for a month, figure it out, and then come back. So, that's where we are tonight.
Okay, and one, one other real quick thing, Andy, is that, um, the commission did accept the site plan review standards A through F, and we also accepted, uh, the special land use review standards A through F. So we are technically, in the, in the process here, we are up to the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards. So that's where we'll, we'll start on, after we hear from Andrea. Okay, so we've, we've accepted the two standard ones that we have, and then we'll go into the adult use.
Which are basically our boilerplate, did we?
Exactly, as a, as a, as a course of action. Andrea, would you please come on up, give us your name and address, please, again, and let us in on this.
Sure. Andrea, Andrew, 15 Fort Smith, New York, Grand Haven, representing 2335 West Main. Um, I think that your staff and, and the Planning Commission did a good job of explaining that, and I think essentially what we're asking now, you have two site plans in front of you. Um, what has transpired since the last time that we talked, there's kind of three levels, obviously, permitting when we have, um, your municipality, then if, if it's not regulated by your municipality, we move up to the county, and the county has no standards as far as regulating hookups to water and sewer. So we're moving on to Eagle, that regulates wastewater, onsite wastewater. We don't have an answer yet, um, to what's going to be allowed and what's the most economically friendly for this project, if we're going to clean water up to discharge standards, um, and then discharge it onsite, or whether we are going to just hook up to the water and sewer. Eagle's not always the easiest to get a hold of. We've kind of went back and forth trying to, to touch base with them. So what we're asking you to do tonight is one of two things. Either just approve the site plan with the hookup to the property to the north, which we'd call, you know, Site Plan One, you could, you know, condition, that's the, the site plan that's been approved, or if you're amenable to it, we'd like to ask you that you approve Site Plan One with the condition, or the option, um, if Eagle allows, um, for the, for us to do that, and we decide that's the best thing, with that being kind of option two, um, approval, so that you have both of them, you, you have both of them written into your records, um, either there's approval, there's a paper trail that shows what exactly you did. We understand if you don't want to do that because that makes it confusing, so we're okay with you just approving the site plan. Right now, our option that we're moving towards is hooking up to the property to the north. We have a relationship with church, we will continue, um, to coordinate with them, we will provide all required easement documents, um, and move forward with that. If we find that Eagle's gonna allow that, we are willing to come back to the Planning Commission and amend our previous approval, or if you're amenable to just approving with, um, conditions that either site plan is appropriate, then we'll just move forward administratively, um, working with your staff as far as building prevents and, um, planning issues. Either's okay with us, obviously, we prefer to not, we love seeing you guys are great, but we would prefer to not, you know, have to keep coming back and forth if it's just a, a matter of paperwork, uh, from your perspective.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, so I, somewhere in here I read, you're currently only gonna utilize 1,400 square feet of that building, correct?
Um, I have not, like, we're gonna use all 37, or 2,700 square foot of the building. There would, there was phase development that we were going to develop 1,400 square feet, this was last year.
Okay.
We were going to do phase development, develop 1,400 square feet, um, white box out the rest, get that up and running with plants, and then develop that while we had the plants in the ground, was the intended plan.
Now you wanna do it all?
Is that correct?
Well, the, excuse me, uh, 14,000 square feet, and then, so the building is 27,000 square feet, so Phase One is, like you said, 14,000 square feet, and then four, two, Phase Two will be the remaining after that. So right now, we're just focusing on Phase One of the building. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does.
So yes, the answer's yes. You're right.
Any other questions? Andy, any other questions? Um, Commissioners, do you wanna make a decision now, or do you wanna go through the adult-use marijuana and get to the end of the conclusions, before we make that decision whether or not either one is okay?
I would just have that discussion, like, do you wanna?
Rather have it now? Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm all for just getting hooked into the sewer. You're gonna do 14,000 now, and you're gonna do 14,000 later. I kind of know the water consumption that it takes to grow these facilities. Uh, when you're getting down the farm, it was, right, we were six inches of groundwater deep, or one inch of rainwater, so it's a lot of water. And then looking at your site plan, you know, where the site sits, I didn't see where any good spot would be to put a filtration system to where, you know, you were cleaning it up and, you know, uh, where a drain field or any of that could be on the property, so if you got a working relationship, I think I, I personally like to see you just go that way.
Andy, is it, also, if we do go that way, um, they could come back and ask for amendment to site plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
If they decided to go with Eagle.
They could. Um, so if they went with a private, um, you know, subject system, you know, I, I mean, I guess the, the zoning analysis doesn't really change, right? I mean, the physical improvements to the site are gonna be the same, it's just what they're doing with their, um, with their wastewater, so I don't know that, so I mean, personally, I'm fine with, with either one of these. I mean, the city, you know, the city's ordinance does not require them to hook up. So if they have a, a septic system that is satisfactory to the county and/or Eagle, if they need to get involved, then that's fine. I think that can be approved. And if they want to connect to the sewer system instead, I think that's fine too. I mean, from a zoning, you know, from a zoning perspective, I don't think it changes anything that we would put in this condition, that doesn't change the physical development of the site. Um, there's a small, so to answer your question, Marty, there's a little spot they have on here, um, north of the, it's, it's right between kind of the northeast corner of the, of the development, between the property line. I can get it up on the screen maybe if it's connected and show you. They have a, they have a site identified on here for where the drain field would be. I'm not sure what the specific subject issues with Eagle are with respect to the drain field, because they usually don't get involved with this kind of thing, usually it's Tommy what, because of the nature of the use that the septic system.
That's a drain field to be of, of property.
No, we're on it, on it.
May I? There's two existing drain fields that we're trying to figure out the exact condition on, on the site that are currently used, utilized. There's, um, one on the north, uh, the southeast side of the, of the west, southwest side of the west arm of the building, and there's another one on the northeast side, where the, the property comes up at an angle from the southeast to the northwest, and there's a drain field right below there, on the north side of the building. So there's two existing drain fields.
Just seems to me that there's more certainty overall for everyone if they just hook into the sewer system, right? You got, if you're wondering what Eagle's gonna do long-term or short-term, you know, if you're gonna commit whatever you're gonna do with respect to water quality, um, in terms of, you know, the city, um, Planning Commission's goal of, you know, upgrading properties as people develop them for pot shop use.
Right.
Why not go with the certainty of having a place that's fully hooked up to sewage rather than something that, no matter what, you know, septic's always, you know, not temporary, but it's, it's less permanent than a hookup to your city, to your city's sewer system. So just go for that, and then you guys don't have to worry about it anymore.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I, I, it, it just seems to me as though that area out there, um, should be in the water and sewer system, the entire area there. And, you know, if, if, if we don't have a major, um, water and sewer usage like this out there, we should. I mean, it should just be a part of the thing. And I like the idea that, uh, like Colin said, it's, it's, um, there's no question at that point. The, the, the answer is there.
Yeah, 'cause when I was a warehouse, I mean, being in the trades and owning a construction company, it probably went through five, 600 gallons, maybe, a day. Quite confident you're gonna be way over that usage, even though most of it doesn't leach out, but there's always that, that constant flow, so, yeah.
Okay, so, go ahead, Tony.
Are you guys hooked up to the storm sewer as well? I don't remember seeing it in the plans, I mean, it's a lot of asphalt, I don't know.
I mean, uh, storm sewer is what we're talking, you're talking about rain runoff?
Right, rain runoff.
Yeah. I think that pretty much just leaches into the...
To the back, yeah.
Because that is all asphalt back there, right?
In the back of the building? Uh, no, I think it's, uh, it's creative, it's just, the only asphalt we have is on the side of the, um, church. The back of it is all grass and...
Yeah, there, there is existing non-conforming, we're not proposing any modifications to the exterior asphalt. We're gonna, you know, kind of patch up a couple places, but it's all non-conforming, there's no onsite intentional detention, it's just naturally leaches. I'm perfect into that side of the asphalt.
Okay, I'm good.
Good, Tony, good?
He's got a better picture.
Anybody else, question? Um, let's, let's include that, um, that they hook up as a condition, it would be a condition for approval. Okay?
Pardon? It's an alleyhead.
Okay? Then, uh, we would start in at, uh, the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards, and that goes B through, uh, M. So we'll do those, as we always do, we'll do them all together, okay?
Okay, maybe. So this is starting on page 10, from the staff report from last year, July 8th, 2020. So item B talks about separation distances, so it's gotta be a thousand feet from a pool and daycare and so forth, they need those criteria. Item C relates to odors, um, so in this case, the site plan, this is all the same as what we've covered. The odors there would be passed through an activated charcoal filter system, made air pressure would be maintained inside the buildings. Um, you know, standard HVAC is proposed in areas that aren't going to be, containing, uh, any marijuana plants, um, but even in those cases, air in the offices and stuff will still go through these activated charcoal systems. Uh, their HVAC systems propose each grow vegetation rooms, so there's six of those for Phase One, and then, um, each grow area has, uh, packaged heating and cooling units, which will have charcoal, which will have a charcoal filtration section as well. Um, item D states that the establishment shall be operated and maintained at all times so that if byproduct or waste shall be properly and lawfully kept and disposed of. So there is a operations plan, and in that operations plan, there is language that details historic, destruction, disposal, waste. Any retail product would be immediately removed from the saleable inventory, kept separate from those products. And then destruction and disposal would occur in accordance with the, uh, the state's emergency rules. And they propose to use a translucent container to offer visualization of the shredder's effectiveness during destruction. During destruction, they have to keep records of that in metric, which is the state's monitoring system. Uh, there is a dumpster shown on the site plan, too, I know that was a question, I think, on a previous one, they've updated that since then to show it. Um, subsection E just says that you can't run a marijuana establishment on a resident, which they're not proposing to do. Um, item F, any portion where the energy usage and heat exceed typical residential use, storage of chemicals and herbicides, pesticides, et cetera, shall be subject to inspection and approval by the fire department. Fuels, fertilizers, et cetera, um, shall be stored and secured in lock area and comply with the state regulations. Uh, and here, they have six grow rooms for Phase One, each one, I think, would require energy and heat to connect as, to residential use, obviously. Um, so we do recommend as a condition of approval that the Planning Commission require the facility to be subject to inspection and approval by the, by the fire department to ensure compliance with those codes. Um, they are, so according to this, uh, any of those flammable products would be stored according to the Michigan Administrative Code, that's from their project narrative. Bleach, pesticides, et cetera, would be in a, you know, supplies closet with a commercial grade down, with an actual lock. Those are also subject to the state's emergency rules. And the operation plan also states that hazardous waste would be managed pursuant to the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, that's the Act PA 451 of 1984. Uh, item G just says that a establishment may not operate from a business that sells alcohol or tobacco, which is not proposed here. H, no drive-throughs, that's not proposed here. I, I'm going to appliance, uh, at all times with the Michigan Taxation Regulation Marijuana Act. J, the Planning Commission may require additional landscape buffers or screening, the onlook is required in 4.26. Um, they do have landscaping along Main Street that is shown, there's not a lot of landscaping on the site, um, given, given the existing, you know, condition of, of, of the property with their voting years and overall improvement, and not a lot of room for landscaping, generally speaking. Um, item K, they shall maintain clear and adequate records, documentation that demonstrates that all candidates and candidates' products have been obtained and are provided to other permitted and licensed operations. So they will, uh, have to use the statewide monitoring system metrics to record marijuana waste and identify product recalls. Then as a condition of approval, the Planning Commission may require the cities to have the right to examine, monitor, and audit such records. Uh, item L, have to pull up all, all of their permits, which would be addressed as a condition of approval, so it would include building, electrical, plumbing, chemical, et cetera. And then, M just states that in the event of any conflict, uh, these, the act would preempt the ordinance, which would also be addressed as a condition of approval. So with that, um, I guess I should let you guys discuss, and then vote on those. If you are inclined to approve the site plan, we'll re, we'll go through the conditions quickly.
Right.
Um, they will, it would look to be the same conditions you had last year, with the addition of the one that required them to, to super.
I, I will make the motion that we accept the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards, B through M. Is there a second?
Well, I kind of got a question for Andy first, please.
Okay.
Uh, Andy, the charcoal filtration systems, are these the same, are we requiring the, the same ones we did when we first set this up? Um, because I know they improved, they've gotten better over time.
So the ordinance isn't, doesn't get into great technical detail about what type of system would be required, so if it satisfies that kind of a criteria, then the act could be the same one. When this was prepared, I think the intent was to worry more about, you know, the effect as opposed to how they get there, so if they have, you know, one really, really good filtration system, or, you know, much more complex, but maybe less efficient system, that's up to them, as long as when you're outside of property, you can't smell marijuana, that was the overarching goal here. So I do think that if, you know, after operations, if it's noticeable at property, like if you're walking down the sidewalk, or, you know, maybe a brand property, you go, wait a minute, you know, I can definitely smell marijuana here, then I think the city, at that point, would be able to get in touch with the applicant and say, hey, you're not, you know, performing the way that, you know, you're supposed to be, or then they would have to take additional steps to recognize that situation.
So it'd be a moot point then to just say use the, to, I mean, just to make sure that the best is being used, because we don't have a grow facility this size.
Correct.
So I want to make absolutely sure that, uh, all the bases are covered.
Yeah, so I mean, you could include a condition that they, um, you know, utilize or maybe submit additional documentation that demonstrates the effectiveness of whatever specific product they're using. You know, I personally am not really qualified to evaluate that, but you could talk to somebody who is.
Because, I mean, we learned about how the gels work now, and lots of new things we've learned sitting here.
Sure.
And over the years that we put this all together, so, and we've, I'm, it's just, it's sheer size when you go, you know, I just want to make 100% sure that when the kids from the church next door outside for Sunday school, that there's no, because I don't want them harping on you guys, right? So I'm trying to get that figured out now, and be done.
Um, and I, I too have a question, I guess, on K, um, or, excuse me, J. Uh, J, under remarks, the app plan has proposed a privacy fence along the street property boundary, uh, to help screen the use from the adjacent church property. And if I'm not mistaken, we also asked that that fence be extended along the north property.
Yep, and that is shown on these site plans.
Okay, so that's there. Okay. It's just not, it's not in the, the remarks.
Okay. Yep, we have a, a six-foot-high vinyl fence running from, along the east and across the road.
Okay, I'm planning on that. Then I will, uh, make my motion again to have the adult-use marijuana establishment special land use standards, B through M, be accepted. Is there a second?
Good second.
And is there a discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Uh, then Andy, you wanna go through the recommendations?
Yep, so we have, um, 24 conditions shown here. Um, so, you know, quickly, these are very typical from, you know, compared to what we do with other marijuana establishments, so number one, uh, either permit fees, two, obtain, or comply with requirements from the DPW, engineer, fire, police, and others city officials. Three, comply with federal, state, and local statutes, submit their permits, including those from MDOT, uh, for the driveways and pool light power. Four, compliance with applicable ordinances and votes and requirements of the city. Five, probably take five hours, that's about the same site plan items, I don't think we have any of those anymore, um, so we can... So we can delete number five, I think. Six, submit a copy of a provisional license issued by the city, and the facility shall not open until appropriate operating licenses have been obtained from the city of Waltham, state of Michigan. Seven, submit a copy of the state license to operate to the city. Number eight, continually comply with site development requirements of thirteen oh four eighty-three, give the zoning ordinance. Number nine, comply with landscaping and security requirements of four point two six, unless specifically waived by the planning commission. Ten, plant and lawn areas shall be in a healthy condition and need normal appearance, replace anything that dies. Number eleven, provide two ADA area parking spaces, one of which is inaccessible. Twelve, signage shall comply with check twenty, obtain a sign permit. Number thirteen, address any security plan items from that outlined in that staff report. Number fourteen, submit a signed and notarized copy of a statement of consent to the city. Number fifteen, receive approval, receive approval and comply with any requirements of M dot and wall light power. Sixteen, doors and windows shall remain closed, except in the middle of time, length needed to allow people to go in and out of the building. Seventeen, obtain an M dot early permit. A trash enclosure provided shall be secured and locked at all times, that's number eighteen. Number nineteen, fuel, fertilizer, pesticide, pesticide, et cetera, shall be stored in a secured locked area. Be in compliance with state pesticide laws and regulations, subject to inspection and approval by the fire department. Eighteen, no sales of alcohol, powder, or tobacco. Twenty, comply at all times and in all circumstances with the, the state act. Twenty-two, maintain clear adequate records and documentation demonstrating that all cannabis and cannabis products have been obtained from and are provided to other permitted and licensed cannabis operations. Twenty-three, obtain all necessary building, electrical, plumbing, chemical permits, et cetera. Twenty-four, if there's a conflict, the requirements of the state act would control over your ordinance. And then twenty-five would be the application shall connect to public sewer services, I have a question on that one. Do you want to, so, they submitted two site plans, one has water, one has sewer. If in the event that sewer is not workable for them, or somebody, that maybe it's prohibitively expensive, or whatever. Do you want them, so is this a sewer or nothing? Would you be agreeable to a septic system and drain field in any circumstance? Would they have to come back here to, for amendment if they wanted to move forward with a private septic system instead of using a sewer? Because that's where I'm.
I think we can, with the vote of coming back here, that they, they shouldn't be converting to the public sewer and water. And then if, if that does, you know, if it's really prohibitive, then they can come back here and do an amendment.
So I mean, I need to know in the condition here that if they desire a septic system, then they have potentially a term for the planning commission. Or a special land use standard. Okay, and then, so that would be condition twenty-five. Condition twenty-six, if the commission desired to add anything about Andy's comment with respect to odor control. So whether it's submitting information, do you want to address that in some way? You know, odor shall be detectable, you know, I don't know what language you want to use, is that something the commission would like to address?
I think we can leave it up to staff to look at it, but it should be, it should be in there as a condition that the strongest possible. Odor control be used for obvious reasons with the church right next door. So a, a plan of action, I guess, would be appropriate for the.
And should we have them turn, submit paperwork to staff for review?
Yes. Does anybody know is there a timeframe for how our little things work? I have no clue.
I think there's a, like, the manufacturers have, you can probably consider, I mean, there's typically like a manufacturer's recommended replacement or.
It's like a filter, you can, you can shift the filters out every six months.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So we can also add to this condition something about, you know, the application shall, you know, follow the manufacturers, or maintain the system per the manufacturer's recommendations, or something like that. Is this redundant? I mean, if the filters aren't filtering out the smells, I mean, they replace them anyways. I mean, having a condition to help manufacturing things, it just, I mean. I mean, we could also add something, so if, if they're not effective, you're right, then it's not gonna make any difference if they change it or not. So to that end, you could add something that also says that there shall be no, you know, odor detectable at the property lines or something to that effect, so even if they're. Who just make simple, make sure that the filtration is effective? Because you can, who's to determine what's the best? Right, so without, so I guess, you could say that it's effective if it's, you know, to me, effective is a subjective term. So I would use something at least less subjective, because I'm not an expert in odor mitigation strategies. But I think something along the lines of there not be anything detectable at their property line might be better player preference. Because you could argue that it's effective if it, if it makes it, you know, less noticeable, but maybe not entirely.
Right, long, long term, that's, I think that's what we're looking at this long time.
Is a bad authority in there?
Yeah, isn't that one of the conditions that we.
Yeah, I think that's one of the conditions we always, we always do.
Yeah. So that's why I mean, but redundant, it's, just have the.
It's already in there.
Yeah. Make sure the filters are effective, I mean.
Yeah, and saying ordinance is not listed as a condition of approval, so I think, I mean, from an enforcement perspective, it might be better to also have the support of a specific condition of the special ladies approval that says, hey, you know, this was specifically addressed by that planning commission as a concern. So in that sense, I think it makes sense to include it as a condition. We do that for, there's lots of stuff where it has conditions that are already in the ordinance, but we put them in here just so we through. There's, you know, absolutely no question.
What's the question?
It's whatever lawyer the planning commission's position is on the, on the matter.
I'm fine with that.
So what does add to that, there's something no odor from the establishment that is detectable at the property lines?
Any other questions? I'll, I'll close the public hearing at this point. Any other questions from the commissioners? And I'll make a motion that we accept the special land use application for twenty-three thirty-five. West Main Street with the following conditions of one through twenty-six, delete this.
Well, we deleted one, so it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, with the following twenty-five conditions. Is there a second? And is there a discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, good luck. Welcome.
Thank you.
There is no business, so staff report, Sue.
Nothing further.
Mike?
I don't know if you're all familiar, there's some bills, there's a bill that's already been approved out of the House, State House, pertaining to short-term rentals. Basically, if this does become law, your current short-term rental ordinance will become obsolete. I believe the Senate is looking to vote on it this week. The Michigan Municipal League has been very adamant, trying to at least get some sort of a compromise bill that could work. I know there was a compromise bill proposed in the House that got thrown out, and they approved the bill that they approved, which basically was, which basically takes away local control. And then this week, the Senate's supposed to go and maybe take action, I don't know. I know there's been quite a bit of effort with the governor's office, being the fact that the, the House, the Senator Republican, and the, and the governor's Democrat, that maybe this will get stopped at the governor's level. But we'll wait and see, so.
If it gets passed by the Senate, how long before the governor has to weigh in on?
I believe the governor had, I believe it's fourteen days.
So we would know before our next meeting, probably.
He would, yes. Yeah, I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna have, it's supposed to go, the bill's supposed to go to the Senate this week, they're supposed to go around this week.
Well, there's no sense us doing anything necessarily, but Andy would be aware of it, and Andy can write up or add it to the agenda for December, if necessary.
Yeah, you'd have to, so if it passed as it's presented, you'd have to repeal what is currently in your zoning ordinance on short-term rentals completely. You could adopt a regulatory ordinance, but you wouldn't be able really to limit the number of, you can't, which it, the limit on a number of them is like thirty percent of the houses in the city. So you basically have unrestricted, for all intents and purposes, an unrestricted number of short-term rentals possible in the city. You would still be able to regulate some health and safety, welfare types of things through a police power ordinance, but we can't do it through zoning.
And you're just taking a place, force the noise ordinance, and.
Yeah.
There's noise ordinances, there are nuisance issues, the police department can still address those.
Yeah, you just can't.
Those would be council ordinance, it's not.
Correct, they're already, they're already in the books now, so, yeah.
So like, I mean, there's, I think, two that have been permitted in the city now, so those, I mean, they were basically just from permitted uses by right. The conditions that you proposed on them would essentially go away. The zoning enforcement would go away, the ordinance that you have in place right now, which is in zoning, would have to be, have to be repealed, and we, city council primarily, we have to figure out a different way to deal with them.
So we're lucky, this isn't an issue for us, so to speak, I mean, we're, short-term rentals is relatively small issue in the city. But I mean, some of the Lake Shore communities, they're, they're just getting hammered with this.
Disaster, I think, from experience, so we're in South Florida, and.
Yeah.
It's absolutely a disaster.
Exactly, that's.
No matter what happens, it will still continue to be a disaster.
Exactly.
I mean, it's an ongoing issue, that's for sure. Okay, well, you guys will keep, keep on track with, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I got a question on the adult use marijuana establishment special land use standards, the C one. Odors, the odors, your description of that, that's kind of what I was referring to. What does it take to revisit that and bring the language up to be, I mean, it says sufficient odor absorbing ventilation, can we change that to be something, I mean, more effective, sufficient?
So to update that language, it would be an ordinance amendment, so you'd have to, you know, you can ask us to, you know, you know, do some research and propose something stronger. And then we bring it to you for, for review, and then you'd have to schedule a public hearing on amendment and assembly council, if you.
Because when it comes to odor, I'm much rather we stay ahead of that curve, right?
Right.
Because if we fall behind, and it's been a while since we put all this together, so I just feel now's the time to just go back in and make our little tweaks and.
Andy, my question to you is, is if we do make those tweaks, with the ordinance, are the original, are the ones that are already been approved, are they grandfathered, or do they, or do they have to make modifications?
They would have to make modifications now.
Okay.
So if they're the operational thing, it would be able to continue doing what they're doing. And even now, your current regulations still have that kind of performance-based, you know, standard, right? So if you're walking down the street or something, and you get, you know, knocked over by the smell, and you can say, wait a minute, you have a potential issue, and you can deal with it. Most of them aren't a big problem right now, because they're all retailers, all, most of them are retailers, and so there's, the risk is much lower there. When you have the micro businesses and the growers, I think there's a much higher risk of.
There, there may be an issue with one right now, I'm working on it, I don't really want to get into specifics on it right now, but I am working on it. The other, the other micro business, they're, they're, I've, I've been to both of them, and the other one, the one's not an issue at all, I mean, there's, they're, they're fully in compliance. The other one, I'm working on.
Let's, let's do it this way then, twenty, let's have Andy look at C in its entirety.
C, section I, first, it's just activated air scrubbing.
Well, let's, let's just go all C, all of the odor issue, let's, let's go there and take a look at it, and bring us up to date at our December meeting. And then if we feel that it's appropriate, then we schedule a public hearing in January.
There should be a larger body of knowledge and research out there at this time, since it's, you know, become much more common throughout the state and nation, frankly, so. I mean, can we, should be able to get an idea of what's working out, what's not.
And can we put words in there that imply that it's the up-to-date kind of stuff versus, I don't know, carbon, I mean, carbon filtration is probably good, but beads, the gel beads, you know, it's like, make the language a little bit more ambiguous or vague, but yet, top of the line.
Yeah, we, we could add something to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, we did a good job putting this together, so I just, that's one thing, I think that we just periodically, we can just go back and look at, maybe every two years or something.
It's been four years since.
Yeah, because technology evolves every day, right? If I actually enter today, tomorrow it's obviously.
Especially with people not liking all of them that are coming in, weeks to have our game.
Mike, any other comments?
Yeah, I can just tell you what the, what the order, we are very on top of that, and like I said, it really hasn't been an issue. Especially with the dispensaries, like I said, there's a little bit, there might be a little bit of one right now, and I'm, I'm working on it, so.
Andy, anything? No, I was gonna update you on the short-term rental bill, but I didn't summarize that, so we will.
You stole your thunder.
Sorry, well, I mean, I figured he, he's also aware of this, I'm sure, because it's like, we're getting beat up with that with this topic by MAP, MML, MTA, MRE, local government organization. Climate organization, the state is, you know, screaming about this issue, so it's hair port to that. We're hearing a lot about it, and I've read it a couple times, because I had a lot of my tour interested in this, so we will keep on that and let you know what happens. It might, there's a lot of, we go nowhere, that's happened three or four times in the last eight years on this issue, so.
Very well.
Hard to say, but, or, we just need to be ready if they do pass it, if they do it very quickly, and like this one, they pass it at two AM on.
Yeah, they like to slam these in the middle of the night, right before going into recess, so.
Yes. Dave, anything?
No.
Colin?
Marty?
Thank you to all the voters for turning in. Thank you for giving the music.